Meeting to order. Um, start off, we got to pledge allegiance to Mr. Sanders. Shall I lead us please?
Sure, no problem.
Is everybody ready? Here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Everybody gonna join in? And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible.
That's the problem.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. And roll call please.
Attorney Commissioner Cox.
Your prayer.
Commissioner Horvitz.
Your.
Commissioner Sanders.
Here.
Commissioner Waggy.
Here.
Vice Chair AC.
Here.
And Chair Shanahan.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda review, do we have any changes or deletions?
No changes Chair.
Thank you. Declaration of conflict of interest. Do we have any? See none? Okay, important notice about this meeting, this meeting be conducted pursuant to the provision of the Governor's Executive Order N 2920, which suspended certain requirements of the Brown Act in order to minimize the spread of COVID-19 virus. If you wish to participate in the meeting, please do the following. Uh, webinar if you're here. Um, Zoom attendees, you will be muted. If you have any questions or want to be partake in the meeting, you will be muted. Um, public comment, you can raise your hand icon and we'll see that and invite you to speak. If you want to partake in the discussion as well, when you're invited to, please raise your hand icon and we know you're there. And if you'd like to submit something in writing, please uh, send the comments to iwerby@ci.cloverdale.ca.us. And then Irene will get those and we'll be able to answer those questions as well. Hey, open up the public comments, under this item, citizens may speak on matters within the planning commission's jurisdiction which are not on the agenda. The planning commission is prohibited under public meeting law from taking actions on a matter that are not on the agenda. However, the commission may take citizens' input under advisement. Direct staff to place the matter for future agenda or for discussion under a possible action or refer matters to staff for follow-up. Members of the public may comment on any matter that is not on the agenda, but please limit comments to three minutes. If you have to, if you'd like to make a public, any public comment right now, please hit the icon, raise your hand so we know if you're there.
No hands are raised at this time Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. And moves also consent calendar, minutes review from our meeting October 6th of 2020. Everybody have a chance to look at the meeting minutes and uh, are we all in agreement? Okay, I'd like to have a motion for approval if I could.
I move to approve the meetings of, or the meeting minutes for October 6th, 2020.
Okay, second please.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call please.
Commissioner Waggy.
Aye.
Vice Chair AC.
Aye.
Commissioner Sanders.
Aye.
Commissioner Horvitz.
Aye.
And Chair Shanahan.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. This moves us on to the public hearing items. And that is item number two, which is considered design review, general plan, land use amendment, zoning map amendment, application to consider 21 multi-family residential units, one detachment agreement and related site improvements.
Uh, Chair, Commission members, I'll just give a little introduction and I'm gonna turn it over to Rafael. I think uh, Irene, we did have a PowerPoint, I don't know if you can queue that up? Okay, awesome, thank you. So Chair, Commission members, this is our second public hearing.
Kevin, let me just start right here, Steve was um, texting me, Steve Ledson, or Steve Edinger, or Scott Edinger, the applicant with Steve Edinger, and they, they're on the link, but they can't uh, speak, I guess. Um, is there uh, I'm not sure if it's a problem with their.
I can move them up now if you want me to.
Let's, yeah. Ralph, let's do our little thing and then we'll.
And um, okay.
Okay, so this, this is our second public hearing for the Taylor Lynn Apartments, as mentioned, 21 units. At the first meeting on August 4th, um, there were some concerns raised by the neighbors and by the commission. Uh, we did uh, ask the applicant to address those concerns, which he did respond in writing in your packet, and we're gonna ask him to come up and explain those more when the, when the chair is ready to, to entertain that. Um, we thought we would just kinda go over the project a little bit more, it's been a couple months, and uh, and then open it up, so with that, I'll hand it over to Rafael.
Thanks Kevin. So yes, this is a second hearing, as Kevin mentioned, on the Taylor Lynn Apartments project, phase two. Um, next slide please. So in general, this is the site layout, um, slightly updated, I think, you know, from the last meeting. Uh, I'm not exactly sure how mu- much has changed on this, the uh, site plan. I think the changes you're really gonna see is only elevations, um, which you'll see in a minute, the applicant will get into. Um, next slide please. So from the August 4th, um, Planning Commission meeting at the public hearing on August 4th, these are, um, summarized, this is kind of the main points that were um, brought out by the Planning Commission as uh, items to look, look at further by the applicant, um, there's a few more, but uh, this is one of the main ones that uh, came away from the Planning Commission. Um, was it possible to move the manager's unit from the front to the rear, or sorry, from the, yeah, from the front to the rear? Um, and the neighbors just wanted to make sure that there was, uh, the concerns about dust and construction noise and uh, early morning issues, worked into the project as far as conditions of approval, which those are in there. And then uh, if there's anything that the applicant could do about additional screening of the project from Rome Court. Um, next slide please. And so these are some of the elevations, you can just kinda slowly go through these, uh, just this one and then two more, um, but the applicant will get into a little bit more here. What uh, um, from the inside really what changes, I, they, I know they, they'd uh, went from a little bit more three, more two-bedroom than three-bedroom, uh, so either so four-bedroom versus uh, four, three-bedrooms and the rest are the two. Um, and uh, and you can go to the next slide Irene. But yeah, the applicant will walk you kinda through what changed from the outside here. And his presentation in a second, and you can go to the next one Irene. And the next one. Thanks, and just to remind the commission and the applicants and public, what the applicant is asking for here and what's before the Planning Commission was a request for a meter designer view, the general plan land use amendment and the zoning map amendment to allow for the 22 units on, on the project site. Uh, next slide please. And again, the staff's recommendation for the project, um, is the same, uh, that the, we recommend that the Planning Commission adopt the resolutions recommending to the city council, the adoption of the initial study and the resolution recommending approval to the city council, approval of the designer view, general plan, uh, land use map amendment and zoning map amendment.
Yeah.
And uh, staff's here.
Yeah, just as a reminder, they are requesting zone change and general plan amendment, that's why it's going to the city council. If it was just a design review, then the planning commission would be the final approver of the project, just wanted to.
Yeah.
Sure, that, but just a reminder, yeah. So Chair, we, we have uh, we were um, asking the applicant to kinda walk us through what was changed from this version and second, the first version and how he interacted with the folks around there and and give us his perspective, and so whenever you're ready for that, if you wanna entertain questions about what you've heard so far, that's, that's fine, or if you wanna bring up the applicant, uh, I'll leave that to you.
I'd like to bring the applicant up and so we can see what the changes are.
And uh, maybe when he comes up Irene, if you can go back to maybe the, the site plan, um, and then they can go, probably go through the elevations as he, as he goes through too. Thank you Irene.
Welcome, and both Scott and Steve um, have been moved to panelists, so they should have speaking rights.
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Okay. So um, I'm Steve Ledson, contractor and developer of this project. And I did send a letter into the city to try to address all the issues that neighbors and planning commissioners, everybody brought up at the last meeting. Um, but I'm here to ask, be asked more questions, elaborate more on that. Um, and I'll start with answering your questions about what changed on this project from the last time you saw it. Basically, all we really changed was took out some of the three bedrooms and put in two bedrooms, and there's two reasons for that. The main one is, is that it lowered the price point of the units that we could renting them, the two bedrooms rent for less than three. And we felt like after building phase one that uh, we could use more two bedrooms in the community, that that seemed to be rent really fast. And the three bedrooms are a little bit slower. Um, and also, when we did that, we simplified the firewalls in the buildings in order to make up for the lost rent that we would get from the three bedrooms, so we tried to find a balance at the city of what the city is looking for rent-wise and still keep the character of the project and keep the quality and you know, the actual landscaping and the things that we did in phase one. That's, that's basically the only changes from the last time you saw it. If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
Mr. Ledson, did, did you increase the fence height for more screening? I thought that was one of the, the changes.
So we, we are, we're all for building a fence as high as uh, we're allowed to build it. Um, we can build it a solid fence, whatever height the city will allow, we can build it six foot and then a foot of trellis or two foot of trellis, whatever um, is, is approved. We, if anybody looked at the fence we built on phase one, it's not just a standard neighbor fence, it's got six by six posts, thicker material, heavy material, it's all been stained and it will be kept stained for years and years to come, so it never deteriorates. All, it's all screwed and glued together, it's not nailed. It's built to last a long time and it's built at a height that uh, was screening most of houses next door. In fact, when we, prior to putting the fence up, we went to all the neighbors and we said, you know, we wanna build a new fence and one of the neighbors said, well, you know, I like my fence, I don't want you to change it. And I said, okay, well, that's fine, so we started building the fence and pretty soon I see this guy peeking over the fence, we go, hey Steve? Yeah, he goes, I changed my mind. I said, what do you mean? He goes, I love that fence, he goes, go ahead and, you know, tear mine down and, and, and build that fence. And then some of the neighbors want us to tie their fences in and, and someplace want all new side fences, so we, we worked with the neighbors to make sure everybody was extremely happy with the fence, and I think the total height of that fence is about eight feet, it's a total of eight feet high. So I don't know if the city would allow a higher fence. Our units are, the, the front of the units that face Rome Court are quite a ways away from the fence, they're, they're not. Well, these units are gonna be built right up against the Scallenger project. So our building will actually screen the Scallenger project, you won't, you won't see that anymore, that'll be screened. And the front of our units will be facing the neighbors, not the rear of the units where everybody's upstairs and looking out at the neighbors. Scallenger's the rear faces and that's where they're at, they're out of the deck, looking out the window, they're looking over at Rome Court. Ours is not like that, ours is facing back against Scallenger's.
Irene, could you go back one, one slide to the site plan? Uh, I guess it's maybe one more. Yeah. So I don't know if the commission, you can see where it says site layout on the slide is basically where Rome, Rome Court is.
Right. Right, so besides uh, the fence that will be against the Rome Court property, we wanna plant some very mature trees there. I, I don't know if anybody noticed, but when we did phase one, we brought in maybe even a dozen huge trees that we actually went and picked from the orchards, like the olive trees, I had picked them out of an orchard in Corning, and put those in, they're, they're 25, 30 feet tall. I added some more live oak trees, that's what was on the site. And we're more than prepared to not only build a really long, tall neighborly fence, but put in the proper amount of trees that screen our building, also take away from noise, they, they cushion the noise, cushion the look, and trees that feel like the Cloverdale, you know, not bringing in some other tree, but bringing in oaks and stuff that are mature trees, 25, 30 feet tall. So that should be a pretty good buffer along that side.
Mr. Ledson, would you mind addressing uh, your concerns with moving the manager's unit from uh, the front to the back?
Sure. Um, as I'm sure most people know, I've, I've been in the construction business for 50 years, believe it or not, and uh, I've built a lot of units, a lot of homes, a lot of projects and one thing, you know, I've made the mistake in, in projects of building the manager's unit in the back. And what happens every time is that there's nobody watching the project because cars are coming in fast, slow, cars you don't know who they are, you name it. But when I build them and I put the manager's unit to the front, the manager sees everybody that comes in, so if he notices, hey, I've never seen that car before, who's that car? He'll watch and see, and if it doesn't leave and it, you know, he, he can go address the issues because he sees everything that happens. That's one of the reasons, because it's a good security, security point, if he's in the back, he's not watching anything. The other thing is, is that, you know, I've had a home in Meniscio County since 1972. I've driven up Cloverdale Boulevard numerous times and I enjoy seeing the projects where there's homes in front and then the units or whatever, the other project is in the back. And uh, the home that was on this site originally, the, the original owners go back to Taylor's and even before that. It was kind of a nice, you know, somewhat old Victorian house and it had some kinda character, it got ran down and, you know, we all know the issues that happened with it, but I feel good about building a house back there. I think it would be nice to drive down Cloverdale and look at this nice Victorian home and have the units being behind it. So those are my two reasons.
Thank you.
Oh, you have anything for the commissioners at this point?
Yeah, I had some thoughts about the house. What if you um, instead of building a house out there, add an apartment or maybe, maybe a single-story apartment, but and put in security cameras and install them in the, in your first project in the, in the um, so that the, the manager of that project could kinda cover both bases rather than have one, have an individual manager on each site. And then maybe lower the height of the last building number five uh, to kinda make it not so objectionable to the Rowan Court uh, Foothill Boulevard people.
So right now in phase one, our manager lives in the very front apartment. And we wanted the, the manager to have a house, two-bedroom up in the front where he can watch both projects, where his computer in his house will have the cameras for both projects included, it'll be, it'll even be seeing the ones between us on the Scallenger project. We're also monitoring all the water usage, the manager would have in his computer, he can look and see the water usage of each unit. We, we uh, we've had experiences with people not understanding the use of water, water and thinking since it's only one meter that we pay for that the water's free, and so what we've done is we actually charged for the waters. And we, we had a situation come up, and this has happened before, we put meters in each unit and we monitor them. So just to let people know what the water use is, when we saw this one meter, it was like three times what it should have been. We called the, the family up and asked if they're aware, and they said, oh my God, I guess having all my family over to do all their laundry is running my bill up, and she said, you know, they come over for coffee, we had to specialize, everybody does laundry. I said, well, you, you gotta pay for that if you're okay with paying for it, and that stopped, it stopped it right away, so. Um, the manager there has got a lot more going on than average places, you know, we want these units to be neat and clean, kept up, landscaping, paint, camera monitored, water monitored, garbage monitored, everything all the time. And for me to get a person that's gonna stay with us for a long time, I want to be able to provide him a nice home, uh, him to be, feel comfortable, and I'm sure it'll be somebody that lives in Cloverdale now, and somebody that lives in Cloverdale would be a great person, they know the town, they know what people expect. So that's why, you know, and I don't have that on the other side, so this, this home will cover for, actually for all three of those buildings here.
Through, through the chair, would you mind if I asked another question, if no commissioners have any questions at this time, or?
Yeah, please.
I, I'm just, I, I wanna just kinda go through some of the points that were brought up at the, at the first one, Mr. Ledson, the uh, there was some question about, could there be a reduction in the number of units, and I don't know if you, I'm sure you've run the numbers 10 different ways, maybe you could speak to that a little bit about, and, and I know you responded in writing and it's in the attachment to the staff report, but I was hoping maybe you could just uh, and say that for uh, maybe the folks who didn't get a chance to read that.
Yeah, you know, um, I, I've built in a lot of towns, all the way to Crescent City, Redding, all over. And one thing in every town that we're up against is, is sprawl. Just continue to increase the size, pushing the city out, creates more traffic, more, more, everything, police, water, everything, so. Fuck, looking at a site, looking at what others built around it, and try to make the best use of the property for where it's at, to supply housing for that town. If you cut back on units, you're gonna put them somewhere else. Where are you gonna put those, they're gonna sprawl, what are they gonna do? So to me, the zoning that I'm asking for here, I think is a, is a, a good balance based on what is next door and the other two, other two projects, and if I take units out, then the cost is gonna go up, which is the opposite of what I wanna do. I mean, it's hard enough for people nowadays to rent a house, people wanna buy, they can't even buy. And the costs are gonna continue to increase. And we all work hard to try to keep those down, I know we do every day in our business. So to me, it doesn't make financial sense, it doesn't make sense to me as looking at the city as a whole. And like I said, I've been driving through Cloverdale long before the freeways, I own property in Meniscio, lived in Meniscio since like 72 or 73, but I've been coming there long before that, and I love the little town, I think it's beautiful. I wanna do something that adds to the character of town, not take away from it. And I want as many people as I possibly can to be happy, and I want you to know that I've sent a letter out to every single homeowner, and I've had some very good conversations with a few of them, and I think you probably have gotten some very good letters, I know one of the neighbors told me he was all for the project, he was so happy that I cleaned up the house and he loves what I do, so I've tried to be as proactive, now some neighbors didn't phone me back, I, I understand. But it's better for me to know what I don't know than what I know, and the more I can know, the more I can help, the more I can make it better. So I think we have a good balance of units for the site, that's, that's my opinion.
I have a technical question for the staff, not necessarily the developer, but uh, and Kevin, what is the city's uh, options for raising a temporary screening fence? How high can we go with a temporary screening fence? Not the permanent fence, which I understand they're gonna put a great uh, you know, six-foot tall fence, but what's the uh, screening opportunities during construction?
Uh, Rafael, yeah, I could just, uh, there, I, I, for some reason I wanna say 12 feet, but there really isn't as far as planning goes, maybe there's like a building, um, in the building department, maybe they have some more to say, but from planning, you know, just seven feet technically the height, but then after that, it's, you know, uh, it's a variance technically, but um, you know, there's really no limit, um, essentially, you can ask, you know, as long as you, as long as it gets approved, I guess, but uh, I, I, I wanna say 12 feet for, I meant, that might be another, another city I'm thinking of for whatever reason, but um, I, I, I can remind, I, I, I'm not sure why you need anything higher than that anyway, um, you know, 10 feet's probably pretty high, but that's just my opinion.
There was, there was a, there was a lot of question about dust and runoff, and I think Commissioner AC, you're trying to get at, is there anything we can do during construction to sort of mitigate that? In, in, in all fairness, there's two projects out there and, and I'm not gonna, I'll see how can I tactfully say that, it, it wasn't this particular applicant where most of the complaints came from, and I think we talked about that at the last meeting. Um, so I don't know, I would defer to Mr. Ledson, and just so, by the way, the, the, one of the conditions of approval is allowing an eight-foot fence, uh, which is higher than what we would normally ask, or this would kind of, you know, encapsulate the variance component, so he's, he has the ability to go eight, you know, for the permanent. Uh, in terms of a temporary, I kinda get, I get where you're going, I'm not sure, I maybe defer to Mr. Ledson with his experience on ways he can think of to help, you know, the dust and, and noise uh, in, on a temporary basis. If that's, I think that's what you're asking.
Yeah, that's exactly where I'm going, I think we can handle four or five of these complaints in one, in just the screening alone, but this is a temporary screening, and then we can address later the permanent, see and how that's gonna affect the neighbors as well, so, yeah.
Yeah, I could talk about that a little bit, I mean, we own our own water trucks, uh, you might have saw me on television putting out the fire at our castle, but we'll be watering every day, I mean, if, if, if the on-site underground contractor is not watering, our truck's gonna be there and we'll be watering. We didn't have any dust issues at all on our site last time. Uh, we made friends with the neighbors and we told them, we gave our cell phone numbers and we told them, if there, you have a concern anytime, just call us. We got some calls, but it wasn't really to do with our project, to be honest with you. And so we'll, we're gonna keep the dust out and we'll put as tall as a fence is, city is allowed to let us put there to screen the work. And we're not gonna be starting before the normal hours of city of Cloverdale requires. Um, the only time we ever ask for a variance of that is if we're trying to get concrete poured and we have a big pour and it's, we know the heat temperature's gonna come sometimes, and I think we did that maybe once on phase one. But something else I, I noticed that we haven't brought up yet, and this came up on phase one, so I wanna mention this, is that on this site plan, you notice the back left corner there says dog run and, you know, picnic area, well, we're not gonna do that, because people, when they have a dog, they don't wanna go back there and walk the dog on that small lawn, they wanna go for a walk downtown and get their coffee, get a doughnut roll or something, stretch a little bit, you know, some people even get on their bike and ride their dog runs alongside it, so. I'd ask the architect to take that off there, we have no intention of doing that, we have no intentions of making a barbecue area. Because people barbecue at their own place, we want that to be a barrier between the other places, an open space with turf, not grass, water and trees. So it's kinda misrepresented, I wanna, I wanna let you know that, that is coming off there.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that because it was on the punch list last, at our last meeting with uh, some of the neighbors in that back corner worrying about having dogs across the fence line.
Yes, exactly, I, I'd be worried too. Well, I apologize for that.
So, through, through the chair, if, if I could ask a, a question again, if, if that's okay with everybody unless someone else has something.
Please.
Um, and Mr. Ledson, is quite, could, could the, could the eight-foot fence be put up prior to constructing? Or is that the typical way you do it, or? I'm just, just throw it out there as maybe, you know, if it's, the new fence is a little taller, it might mitigate some of the, the noise.
Yes, once we got the site built level and, and where we could, we have a permanent place the fence is gonna go, which is long before we pour any foundations or building any houses, we could definitely put the fence up and is, we wish we would have done that last time because it would have actually saved us money. We, we were messing around with temporary fences and stuff, and if we had just went in on day one, it'd been so much easier to build it, we could have got to it simpler. So yes, for sure, I have no problem with building that fence before, but one foundation.
Yes, Mr. Homens?
I have about three questions for Kevin. The first one is.
The first one is the street sidewalks. If necessary, can we make sure that we put root barriers, that root barriers are installed by the trees to protect the sidewalks from future uplifting? And then the second one is permits. Within our city permits, do we have project completion deadlines? And then the third question I have is, we have the Boulevard Apartments, the Taylor Lynn Phase One, and then the Taylor Lynn Phase Two, and that's about sixty-five, approximately sixty-five units. Anyways, um, my question is, can we confirm that we're addressing all the cumulative cumulative impacts at the intersection? And those are my questions.
The um, the tree barrier, I'll have to uh, check if we have a city standard for that. I'd have to check with the public works director. But if not, if it's the consensus of the commission, we can write a condition to uh, to address that. Uh, I'm not sure I understood the second question. It's something about how maybe how long the project takes. That's where you're going, the construction.
I have. So within our 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 permits, do we have something like that? Like, once the project starts, is it going to take three years to complete? Or or does a city have something in the permit process?
Well, I mean, a building permit typically lasts, I believe, two years and they can get extensions. So I mean, we kind of rely on the developer to tell us how long. I mean, obviously, it would be our in our interest and in his interest, I'm sure, to get it done as quick as possible. But um, you know, building permits can be extended. We don't necessarily say to him, you know, it has to be done in two years. Or, you know, I mean, it's, we we don't typically do that. I don't know that we have the ability to do that. So I mean, yeah.
If I may, we have done it on smaller projects, but not on big developments. Where we we've done it where we've had punch lists of how much we want done by a certain date with small projects, but not on on these larger ones.
And the reason I was asking was heel spur, you know, that circle that they had and it took forever just to do. So that's one of the questions why I was asking to see what the city had within their own permit process.
And then I think the third one had to do with cumulative traffic impacts. Is that what uh, yeah? Well, there in the environmental study, there is a a mention, there's the uh, analysis of the traffic. Um, I know that the popular idea is that it's it's really backed up there. But um, in terms of a traffic engineer, it wouldn't necessarily characterize it as that uh, being backed up as much as, you know, the popular perception is. But, you know, I guess it's it's all about perception. But one nice thing about the location of this project, it does give people the ability to walk to things, um, which is, you know, it's a good infill project, which is what we're really trying to promote. But in terms of the cumulative, I don't believe that our analysis looked at it uh, on an accumulative um, effect. We do have our general plan circulation element, which envisioned, you know, general plan build out of a certain number of units and the effects on the intersections on a cumulative basis. So I don't know if it's, it's not real specific to this project, but it does look at land uses and the number of units that could occur in certain places, you know, throughout the whole town and what the effects of those are on all the intersections. So I don't know if that answers your question, but I mean, I don't think directly that was done for this project. But more of an individual project basis.
Yeah, and this uh, Rafael, I'll just add a little, little bit to that. The uh, letter, the traffic letter that was done for this project by W. Trans, um, like Kevin said, didn't necessarily address the cumulative impacts of the three projects in total. But um, like one thing I, you know, off the top of my head, I remember them talking about in the report was uh, they confirmed that the site distance, the the where cars would be coming in and out and where cars were coming down the road would see them um, is sufficient enough. And with the the uh, the turning, the the third, the turn lane there, that um, it didn't warrant a installation of a signal um, based on that part of it at least.
Um, can I ask some questions about the traffic?
Please.
Um, looking at what, you know, what's, what was in the, I guess it was the the traffic, the traffic study. Um, they mentioned only three intersections there, Cloverdale Boulevard, Cherry Creek, Cloverdale Boulevard in both directions, and then Cloverdale Boulevard, Brookside. They don't mention at all Cloverdale Boulevard and um, Hillview, Hill, yeah, Hillview Drive, which is where the Patriot Gasoline is, the Ace Hardware, and then that terrible car wash and a few other things are all kind of clustered around that area. And it looks like the date on that study was uh, December twelfth, two thousand nineteen. So I was wondering, you know, when they actually collected the data and whether kind of what uh, the other commissioners, Horowitz's question was what other apartments were occupied in the area. I drove by there on Sunday evening just to kind of look at the parking. And going all the way down Cloverdale Boulevard towards Brookside, it was pretty much solid parking on the street. And then at on um, Hillview, there was also quite a bit of parking from, you know, about where Ace Ace's driveway comes out on there towards the end of the street. So I'm just wondering if really that intersection with those three apartment complexes, having cars coming in and out, it seems to me that's going to be a problem area.
We, well, when we, when we scope the traffic studies, you know, we we do rely on the traffic engineers to make an assessment on which intersections would be, you know, impacted and would to be studied. And so that's really the reason why those, you know, you you can go out far and and look at all the intersections, but that's not the the typical. I'm not saying you you can't do that, but we, you know, when we scope it, we tell them the the size of the project, where it is. And then they come back and tell us, you know, these intersections should be the ones that you analyze. And, you know, I I it wasn't like a staff decision, but it was, and we rely on the, you know, W. Trans traffic engineers to to give us a, you know, up on what the traffic impacts would be. Um, the project is providing a lot of onsite parking. Rafael, do you know that that number by chance?
Yeah, sixty-six fifty.
So that's, that's a lot. I would suspect that that would be able to accommodate folks living there and and guests. Does that, is that meeting our, that's meeting our code, right, Rafael or?
Yeah, yeah, that meets the parking requirement.
And we 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 really do, and we've talked about this before, have a very high uh, parking requirement for multifamily. Um, and you've seen projects come through asking for reductions in that. Um, it really, it's in my experience, it's it's a, it's much higher than other places. But he has met that number. So just to to talk about, sorry, I'm looking at the report over here, but just to talk about the parking a little bit, it's, it would seem that that would accommodate. I don't know if Mr. Ludson has any thoughts on on the parking um, requirement and how much he's providing and how that translates to his previous projects.
Um, you know, I think this project has a lot more parking than other projects I've built in other cities. I'll have to say that. And if you take a look at our units and parking space that are left vacant throughout the day, there's, there's more spacing that is actually needed for the place. But, you know, I think it's better to have extra parking like we have. I definitely don't think we're short parking in any way.
Does that, it compares to your phase one at the same, is it the same ratio in phase one, Mr. Ludson or?
Yes, it is. Same ratio.
And that's what you mentioned, that there's empty spaces during the day.
Yes, and night. Yeah, and I, day and night, you're going to find empty spaces.
Okay, thank you.
But you don't think there's really an issue with Hillview and Cloverdale Boulevard? I I mean, it seems strange to me that it wasn't even mentioned in the traffic study or the traffic, whatever that analysis was.
Yeah, I agree with you. I agree with you, Bill, because Hillview is right in between Cherry Creek and Brookside, right? So it's pretty much directly across the Boulevard from this this development that we're talking about. So it is strange to me that that particular intersection wasn't included in that because that's the intersection that the cars are going to pull right into when they come out, either left or right, depending on which way they come out from the the driveway there. I I agree with you.
And it's a, you know, it it services a huge, a large neighborhood. I don't know whether it's huge, but.
Yeah. Right, I agree. And if I may just expand on that a little bit, I wanted to ask city staff, what's the status of the car wash? Because if that car wash were to be fixed up and put back into use, as most of us probably know, car washes really create a lot of traffic. If anybody has tried to go down College Avenue in Santa Rosa on any day where the car wash folks are, you know, going for it, you can't even hardly get through there because of the traffic. So if for whatever reason, the car wash here in Cloverdale were to kind of be revamped and open back up, I assume that they have an operating permit, right? They have a used permit for that place and they can open it back up at any time. Is that right?
It's been there so long, I'm not sure if it has a used permit. They have a business license. They're, yes, they're they're and they can operate. They could fix it up.
Right. So, I mean, that could be potentially extremely problematic in the future if there was all three of these apartment complexes there and the car wash kind of all jammed in the same spot.
Yeah, I, you know, I I it's, I don't disagree. I I, you know, I'm not a traffic expert. I do rely on the traffic engineers to to analyze it. And I I know in many projects through my career as a planner that, you know, traffic studies are sometimes hard to believe. Knowing what you know, living in town, I, you know, I, we can, we can find out the reason they didn't include Hillview uh, in the scope. And I can report back.
Uh, this is Rafael, just I I was just thinking, I don't know if it would appease the commissioner or not, but if we can maybe add expedition to um, you know, add more recommending this to the council that uh, that the traffic, traffic report or traffic study be, you know, redone to a full traffic report. Um, if the council, you know, so wishes when it gets so gets gets to them.
I mean, honestly, I would kind of rather see a full traffic study done before we proceed any farther with this.
Oh.
Well, let's get through the question phase and then let's get to the comment phase. Then let's make decisions because I completely disagree, but let's go to that first.
Okay.
And and for our part of what we're doing, we could put that down as a recommendation to the city council, want to let them move forward with it. You know, that's more up their avenue than ours at this point because it is, it is out of out of the study that we were, you know, given. Uh, we have any other questions for Steve?
I have one.
Yes.
Um, is this for Mr. Ludson? Uh, Mr. Ludson, can you share what plans you have for electric vehicle charging infrastructures?
Uh, in phase one, we put all the infrastructure in, but we have and ready to put a charger up. But if anybody has a car that wants to be charged, but nobody that's rented so far has asked for one, so it's all wired and ready to go. We would propose the exact same thing to put all the underground, everything in. So if there's one car, we go put the charger up. And I think we have two or three, three places in phase one that's set for chargers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any additional questions for Mr. Ludson? Okay, seeing none, um, I'd like to open this up to the uh, public to see if we have any comments coming in from the public that they would like to be addressed.
We do have one raised hand, Chair. Let me get a person on there. Julie Carter. You should be able to unmute yourself and speak your comments.
Hey, hi. My name's Julie Carter. I'm a twenty-one-plus-year resident of Cloverdale, and a couple of things are bothering me right now. One is the claim that there's lots of, or that there are some empty spaces in the parking areas where the two apartment complexes are. I happen to walk past that at least twice a day. And if there's one, maybe two spaces empty in the middle of the day, we're lucky. Um, on weekends, it's a total disaster. On, as far as Hillview goes, as someone who has actually tried to cross the street at Hillview, we had, I had, I thought at the last meeting, it was suggested that there be some sort of traffic control put there prior to any construction. Not sure where that went, but just want to bring that back to you. Also want to say, if Development One can have a video manager from a distance, why can't Development Two have a video manager from a distance with the unit in the back where, what, five houses wouldn't be impacted by an apartment? Would have a uh, single-family unit behind them instead of uh, an apartment? And then finally, I just wanted to bring to the council's attention that there are, I believe, nine families in Cloverdale who are going to take a financial hit because of this. I am a teacher for Sonoma County. And right now, my property loss is somewhere back of an envelope, figuring of about a third of a year of my income has been lost since construction started, when compared to other people like across the street. So if you're going to tell a teacher that she's got to work for another year before she can retire because of Ludson building behind me, I'm just dumbfounded. And I know many of my neighbors are my age or older, and they're going to have the same problem. And I need you guys to think about that. Families in Cloverdale are taking the financial hit for Ludson. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any additional public comment?
Other hands are raised, Chair. Um, I did want to mention, though, that we did receive correspondence from Mr. Greg Carter and that was emailed to the commission earlier, earlier today, um, regarding his opposition for the project.
Yes. Okay. And you mentioned there's no other hand raised.
That's correct. No other hands are raised at this time.
Okay. We'll close that part out and bring it back to the commission. We have any additional comments or anything we want to talk to Steve about on the designer view part of this program?
I'll make some comments.
Okay.
Steve, for one, I appreciate you're moving it to two-bedroom sizes. Having worked at the CDC, I understand that the average unit size is two, not three, so you're going to have a better time of filling those units as well as you're going to take better use of a lot of the low-income or other families that are in need, that can only fit into that two-bedroom unit size, not the three-bedroom size. I am uh, very supportive of having a higher screening fence during construction. I know that this is going to reduce a lot of issues. I think going up to twelve feet would be a an appropriate size. It's not too uh, high that's kind of distracting to the neighbors, but it will real at least remove the noise, the dust, um, and a lot of the the disturbances that could happen during construction time. I'm also extremely supportive of putting an overtime or a a permanent fence of eight feet high rather a permanent fence of eight feet high rather than six feet high, specifically because the neighbors are so sensitive to the project in, in the vicinity of it. I do agree that this building does not deter from any vision lines, but actually screens from the other building. And the fact that Steve has put this off of the fence line, I'm appreciative that it's not right on any fence and that he's removing the dog runs, removing the park, leaving an open space, address our previous concern, which was putting the building in the back to try to buffer between there, but now they have an open space buffer. I have run developments like this and developed these in projects past. And I do fully agree, and I hope the commission really takes this serious, that, that the presence, the image of security by having the, the security or the management up front is huge. You can talk about videos from the back to the front or front to the back, but just that presence alone really deters distractions and people who just drive up and down into apartment complex. Let's see, what else? I appreciate the mature trees. That's a benefit to the, to screening as well on that fence line, which will help people out. I agree with security, uh, at least, uh, I, I appreciate that they're monitoring more than just the, the management, the security of it, that they're managing the water use. And then I, I think as a commission, we really need to start thinking high density versus sprawl. This is a location in our town that has, you know, we have some, some, they call them egresses, some, some in and outs of our town where we talk about Cloverdale, you know, by the Citrus Fair exit, you have the, the north and the south exits that are going to, in, in, we're thinking 10 years down the road, we're going to have these as mass transit locations. When the train is running or whatever, these are locations that will connect to the train that will send people out without a vehicle. You cannot deny that the ACE location is going to be one of those odd mass transit locations in the middle of our town. It will be because of the commercial around there. This is going to be mass transit. And you want to surround high density with mass transit. So I think having the apartment place placed there is better than trying to keep this as a single dwelling unit where you have this odd-shaped lot for a house next to apartment place. I think we're better off getting more housing in there, which we need. I know, I apologize, Mr. Carter. He says he doesn't understand how 22 new residents are eagerly waiting the opportunity to move into these apartments. I completely disagree. I think there are thousands of homeless people in our county that are looking for an apartment, and this would be helpful for them. So I, I do think we need high density in this area, and I do think we need to allow 22 homes rather than two. And as for the traffic's part of it, I have participated in many traffic studies. The traffic study takes apart the population that is nearby. It takes apart the commercial, you know, it takes into account the commercial side of it. And the reason why it's addressing not the road that's right off of ACE, and I apologize for not knowing that name of that road, and it's taking Brookside and the other roads into account is because it's highlighting the concerns in those areas. If this does increase to a concern, this would increase the study and the opportunity for putting a light in that area. That's the next move. The, the concern that we, we would address towards traffic for a development like this is about parking. And if I'm looking at that plan, which I don't know how accurate that is, but that's showing 40 spots to 22 units. That's huge in a high-density area where the, where the state is mandating us to reduce parking if they're, if they're going above and beyond in the high-density housing development. So I think the state knows we're in, in a crisis and they've made mandates to the, or changes to the code to allow leniency. And I think it's absurd to think that this is going to influence the, the parking anyway that the study hasn't already shown. So so I'm a, I'm, I'm supportive of this completely. I think in the housing situation we're in in our county, I think that our community could use some housing in this nature, especially for the working class.
Thank you. Any other comments from anybody? I know we've mentioned the tree barrier and the root protector. I think we should put that in. You know, I requested a city as a condition, if, if possible. Um, the 12-foot construction fence. You know, even 15 foot if they could get away with it would be good. Anything else on on the design and, and the way this stuff is laid out on the lot? Do we have any other questions, anything else we want answered? Commissioner Cox, you good?
I'm good with that. Thank you.
Okay. Can you share it over?
Um, I agree with Commissioner Asay's comments. And one of the things that we have with the density bonus law is parking. So if, if the density bonus law took effect, if we, we were to do that, we would eliminate a lot of the parking. So I really appreciate all the parking that this project will have, you know, three per unit. That's, that's great. Like I said, our hands are tied when, when someone takes advantage of the density bonus law and then it reduces our parking. So I really appreciate this parking for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders, any comments?
Well, yeah, I have a couple of comments. I can appreciate everybody's comments here and I understand that the studies are what they are. But at the same time, I feel like we have a responsibility to the current residents of this town. And even though Mr. Ledson has said that he has received letters in favor of this project, I haven't seen or talked to anybody who seems to think this is a great idea, with the exception of Mr. Ledson, some of the other commissioners here and city staff. Not saying that I'm not in favor of this because I understand that we have to have more housing in this community. I just question whether or not this is the right project in its current form. I don't think that the traffic study or the traffic survey that we've had is inclusive enough. It should include that Hillview Drive intersection. And if that means that we have to postpone this, then so be it. If that means that eventually we have to put in a traffic light there, then so be it. If that means that we have to shrink the size of this development, then so be it. And if that doesn't pencil out financially for Mr. Ledson, then he doesn't have to develop here. And I'm sorry, but I'm not going to just rubber stamp every project that comes through here just because we, as a state, have to have more and more and more housing. I understand we have to increase the housing dens- density and our responsibility is to try to prevent the sprawl, but at what cost, right? This is our town. This is our community. And we have to be mindful of the people that live here. And if they don't, if they don't feel comfortable with all of the developments that are coming through, maybe we should pump the brakes on some of these and take a hard look at what we're trying to do long term. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, community commissioners?
Uh, me? I, I think Eric stated some pretty significant points, some that I've been concerned about. I really think the traffic study is inadequate. And I, and I would not like to see additional pressure put on that particular, on the Hillview intersection. The Brookside and the other one, Cherry Creek, they don't, they don't drain as many people. They don't. And, and Brookside is already signaled with a, with a light. So I think that thing needs to be looked at much more carefully. I am also mindful of the concerns of the neighbors. I haven't seen anybody like Commissioner Sanders. I haven't seen anything from anyone else lauding this project. In fact, if you spent any time on the community page or the Facebook page, you see some pretty strenuous objections. I know we need housing. It strikes me that the car wash site would be a great place for apartments. It could be considerably larger, but yeah, I, I think some additional thought needs to be given to the traffic for sure if and, and, and how it impacts the other neighbors. It's very troubling. I'm just, I'm not sure where to go with that right now.
Okay, thank you. On the traffic, we can put that in to recommend to the city council that they extend the traffic study. You know, and it's in there, you know, we're just recommending at this point. So it would be if we're in consensus to recommend that they do a better traffic study before they, they go ahead and approve this project.
Chair, I, I would, I would even work with Mr. Ledson to NW Trans to amend the traffic study if that's the consensus, so that the council would have that information when they're, when this is brought to them, if it, if it's brought to them. So I don't think it would be that big a deal to amend the current study and expand it. Um, I would get an explanation from W Trans as to why they chose the intersections. I mean, UG, they, they, they choose, they choose the ones to analyze that they run the models and they see where the impacts are and that's where the, the study's scope originates, but I don't. Yeah, again, I, I would think that if this is the direction, I would, I would, I think a better way might be to work with Mr. Ledson, uh, to work with W Trans to amend it so that the council will have that information.
Yes, I agree. Commissioner Hovitz?
Kevin, um, do you know what the difference is on the traffic studies? I know that they did this traffic study, but do you know what an operational analysis traffic study is?
Uh, I don't know that I've heard of, of that. Um, I'm not a traffic engineer. I mean, I know W Trans is, is very reputable and we use them a lot, but I don't know the answer. I, I've never heard of that.
Well, on the traffic study that they had, the one that was provided in this report, it says that there was, that it was excluded, that something about no operational analysis actually highlighted. I don't know if I had it in front of me, but they did say that. So that's why I wanted to know what the difference was between that traffic study and an operational analysis traffic study. So.
Oh, that's mentioned in the, that's mentioned in the report. Oh, I thought you, oh, I thought you were asking if that was a specific report onto itself.
No, it was mentioned on the traffic study.
Okay.
I believe the operational study requires us to study it after the effect, after the units are occupied or with the intention that they're occupied. And that's what I would recommend. If we're going to do an up-to-the-study, which is currently saying that it's okay, we know that there's already a problem in that intersection, not because of this development, because it's currently a problem with our community driving in and out of that area. And I do think that there needs to be some address, something addressed by the city to that. Maybe this will influence that. I think we need to recommend on that study to look at the after-effect of it. And if that would influence a light or some kind of traffic change to that specific spot. But again, I agree, this is a good high-density location. Mr. Commissioner Wegi, Wegi, uh, offered the, you know, the idea of over by the, the car wash. That's the same location, same traffic problems. But, you know, I, I think it's all a good high-density area that we have very few of without sprawling outside of our city.
And we will be seeing more of these too with the urban growth boundary and doing all the infill that we're going to be doing. We're going to be seeing a lot of this in the next couple of years.
Yeah, it's either this or annex. And so we either annex more land and sprawl outside and grow, grow wide and large like they do in Arizona, or we, we use the space we have wisely. And I think that this is an attractive apartment complex, and I think that they're doing their best to address the problems of the neighbors. And, and I think a lot of the problems we heard on the very first session to remind all of those were about the first project from another developer. And then we have project two and now project three. This is not the same project. I think we need to disassociate those issues they had. But we're learning from that. We're, we're addressing the dust. We're addressing the noise and the hours of operation. I think we're doing a good job of getting ahead of the curve. But, uh, you know, the, the real truth of this is, do we need a development like this in this spot in the town? Yes, we do. But we need to make sure the traffic's right. I agree with that, Commissioner Sanders.
Okay, um. So we have, we have the two resolutions here. You know, the, the first one is, yes.
Chair, Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt you, sir. Could I just summarize what I think we're, what we're doing here?
Well, that's what I was going to do, see if we make sure to get the tree barrier put in and all that. Yes, please.
Oh, you want to do that in a, in a few minutes?
Go ahead.
Okay, so we're going to, uh, require as tall as fence as possible during construction to be reduced down to eight feet for permanent fencing and that done initially as soon as he can before foundations are poured. Uh, I am going to work with Mr. Ledson and W Trans to relook at the traffic study. You know, run some more models, talk about some more intersections and, uh, enable to give the council a fuller picture of what's going on and, and maybe help talk to the community about what's going on with traffic. And then we're going to, I'm going to investigate the possibility of tree barriers, see if we have a standard. Uh, if, and then include that as a condition of approval. I'm not sure if we have a standard, but if we don't, then we'll, we'll, we'll use another cities or we'll, we'll come up with something that so that there's a condition where, uh, we're going to want to install tree barriers to protect the sidewalks and roots. I don't know if I missed anything, but that's why I wanted to add.
Any additions or? Okay. Okay, so on the design, um, let's attachment one, design review of the general plan, use map amendment and zoning amendment. Do we have any, any additional discussion on the design? On the way it's laid out on the parcel or on the zone? Okay, seeing one. And then item two, we have the resolution recommending the construction basically getting it going of the phase two. So any, any discussion on that? Okay, uh, seeing none, I would like to call somebody, call for a question on, uh, attachment number one, which is resolution minus XXX 2020. So anybody like to make the motion for the the adoption of mitigated negative declaration?
Yeah, I, I moved to, uh, recommend to the city council the adoption of the initial study and mitigated negative declaration to construct the Taylor Lynn Apartments with the 21 multifamily units and one detached managers' unit, uh, the related site of 669 to 679 South Cloverdale Boulevard. With the additional recommendations we've made today of the traffic study, the, the barrier, the screening and permanent fencing. And then, uh, that's the recommendation I move on. Can we make a recommendation for both? Because I also would recommend the resolution of the approval of the council to the design review, general plan use amendment of the zoning map amendment of the DR GPA ZOA 029 2019, subject to the recommended commission, conditions of the approval within.
And that acceptable, Kevin? Do you combine them on a motion?
We should probably do two motions, don't you think, Irene?
That's what I was thinking. Irene, you can tell us.
Yes, it's just cleaner.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do, that's two separate motions, Commissioner Asay. So we have a motion for, uh, attachment number one, which is the mitigated negative declaration. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. I call for a vote, please.
Commissioner Hovitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanders?
Nay.
Commissioner Wegi?
You're on mute, Bill.
Uh, no, nay.
Vice Chair AC?
Aye.
And Chair Shanahan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. That moves us to, uh.
Chair, could I just mention one thing? Um, I, I think it's, it's obvious, but, uh, just for the, the folks listening in, this will be going to the city council in the future when we on an agenda. So they're, they'll, they'll receive another notice of that date.
Yes, thank you. We're just recommending at this point. Uh, so we have item two, which is the design, the design review, general plan, use map amendment and zoning amendment.
I move to recommend that general plan, land use map amendment and zoning map amendment, uh, subject to the recommended conditions approvals within.
Thank you. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Vice Chair AC?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanders?
Nay.
Commissioner Hovitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Wegi?
Nay.
And Chair Shanahan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Hey, thank you, Mr. Ludson.
Thank all of you very much. I appreciate your time this evening and I, I take all your comments in a positive way and take it to heart and, and I can assure you, I wanna make the. Build the best project I can for Cloverdale. And thank you very much.
Thank you. That moves us on to uh, non-public items. Here go the Rafael.
Uh, actually, uh, Irene, there's a uh, a PowerPoint in the folder for the housing element uh, item.
Thank you. I'm just a little slow.
No worries. Okay, great. So um. Chair Commissioners, uh, this is uh, just kind of an informational item that we've been talking about. Um, that we were gonna bring forward and hopefully this will shed some light on what a housing element is. The process and. You know, kind of what we're gonna be asking the commission to do in the next couple of years as we move forward towards uh, uh, updating it. Um, the housing element is one of the elements or chapters in the general plan. You can kind of think of it as our. As the housing plan for the city. Um, so I'm gonna go through all the slides. Oh, just by the way, I have changed the slides from what was in your packet. I've updated it. Um, a little bit this week. So it's a little bit different. It's generally the same, but you might see a few differences. So I'm gonna go through this uh, with Rafael and he can jump in wherever if, if I miss anything and hopefully this is a beneficial and educational for you. Um, so, next slide, please. So what is the housing element? Again, it's one of the seven required elements of the general plan. I'll do a quick slide on the general plan next, just to kind of give a little background and context. Uh, they've been around for fifty years. Uh, one thing that is different about a housing element in terms of its, the place in the general plan is it's the only uh, element that requires the state to approve. They don't have to approve it. A city wants to have it approved because it's big for getting grants. You know, one of the first questions they'll ask is, do you have an. A certified housing element, as they call it. And that's the state housing and community development, H C D. Who uh, reviews those and approves them. And that's done every eight years. Next slide, please. Um, just a little bit about the general plan and if, if the commission would like, we can put together something similar for the general plan, but um. You know, this is really our big planning document for the city. Every city is required to have one. It's the uh, it's a legal underpinning for our land use decisions, so. One of our first findings on all the projects is like, is this consistent with the general plan? Yes, no. If it's not, you know, we should not be approving it. Um, it's, it dictates how the city will grow, uh, reflects our, our, our priorities for growth. You know, it's often called the blueprint for how the uh, city will grow. Um, and there are seven mandated elements and I'll, I'll talk about that next, of which the housing element is one. Next slide, please. So here's the. Here's the seven elements on the left. Cities can do other ones. They can do economic development or, you know. Natural open space or different types of elements, you know, unique to each city, but they do have to have these. Uh, one of the things that I thought of during the last discussion was the circulation element. You know, this, this is an area where, again. They'll take a look at all the land use in town, uh, try to quantify that in terms of, you know, circulation needs. And look at intersections and that would be included in a, in a sequel document, but it's what they call like a programmatic level. So it's a higher level. But subsequent projects to that could use that as a basis. If their project was different, they'd have to amend it. But anyway, you can see housing is, is one of the ones that's required. And just uh, an FYI, the safety element is currently being updated through our process of where. Uh, completing a hazardous mitig, a hazard mitigation plan, which we've been working with. It's basically at staff level at this point, but it's gonna be uh. Oh, there's been some surveys and stuff. There has been some community outreach, but in, in COVID times, it's a little different, but. That probably will be in front of the planning commission. So you will have housing and safety updated. And then there's the other elements. And just, you know, by the way, updating a general plan from top to bottom is a big, big deal. It's very expensive. It's two years. Um, it's a lot of community involvement. Um, our current general plan is from two thousand nine. You know, they do, they can last twenty years, which, you know, there are some. Discussions in the planning world. It's kind of a long time, you know, given the way things move these days, but um, we can talk about that when we have our general plan discussion. Uh, next slide, please. So again, we're in our seventh cycle. Um, the, probably the takeaway on this slide is we need to start thinking about updating our, our plan, which is gonna start. Uh, next year, probably in middle to late next year. It's a pretty involved process. I'll just try to walk you through that a little bit, just to. See what goes into, into one of these uh, housing elements. Next slide. So, you know, all of this really is dictated by the state, you know, government code section six, five, blah, 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 um, about what goes into a housing element. And the major components is, is the housing needs. I'm gonna just talk through these a little bit on, on their own individual slides. Housing needs, site inventory and analysis, which is pretty interesting, constraints, and then housing programs. Um, next slide. So the housing needs, and this is a, I'm gonna try to keep this as high level, so it's, you know, hopefully interesting and not buried too deep in the weeds. You've heard us probably talk about this thing called regional housing needs allocation. And that's a number that the state comes up with. And then distributes throughout the counties and cities about how much housing we're going to need in that eight-year period. Uh, there's other things in there, like promoting infill, job housing balance, fair housing, you know, increasing the number of, of housing mix. Next slide.
All this, uh, I mean, not the huge point, but um, on, on that, on the RHNA, the arena that Kevin just talked about, the. State, there's like, there's basically one step in between, maybe a couple more I don't know about, but there's the ma- major step in between before it gets to the cities, local levels, counties, is uh. Like the bay, the region, you know, the subregions in the state and we're in the, you know, A BAG, you've probably heard of A BAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments, that's our. Uh, there it is right there. That's, that's our um, you know, region. So. Uh, they kind of, A BAG kind of, if you wanna, you know, we're not, not, for lack of a better term, kind of wrestles with other uh. Regions in the state for that arena before it gets down to us. And that's pretty much where we're at now, but anyway.
Yeah, I have a slide, like the next slide uh, kind of describes that process. So. Um, you know, the Bay Area Association of Governments, you know, they give us these numbers. So you can see in this table. Uh, new construction. This is what was assigned to us in the last one. So, and I'm gonna tell you a little bit more about what these titles actually mean, these low, very low, extreme low. But new construction. And so. I don't, I can't remember what the, this, these are the numbers that were assigned to us. And in no way are we to build these ourselves. It's really about. We're going to accommodate this number of units. And I'll show you how we're obligated to accommodate that in the next few slides. But the second row in the table, you can see what we've done. So we've exceeded it. Um, in almost all the categories, the extreme low, and when you see the next slide, you're gonna understand why extreme low is difficult. And every city I've ever worked in, and I've been doing these housing elements for a while now. Nobody ever does moderate because there, and you know, Commissioner AC, you, you may know about this a little bit too, but there's not a lot of money for moderate. You know, there's, there's a lot of grants and tax credit financing and other vehicles for the three on the lower end. Moderate, there's really not that much. So it's not surprising to me that there is a, a goose egg there. Uh, and then the last little thing on this is the, the next cycle, which is being, again, as Rafael said, argued. And batted around at A BAG, and this is kind of a, a process where they'll come out with numbers, cities can argue back and forth. It's going to be higher than what you see here. I don't know what the numbers are going to be, but the preliminary numbers are, are higher than what's here. Uh, next slide.
By the way, Kevin, to interject, that moderate number goes up when you have a lot more businesses and things to uh, absorb those costs that a developer would invest in that. So you're not gonna see moderate until we see more business in this area.
Yeah, and any, any commissioner, please feel free to, to say anything you want at any time. This is meant to be kind of, you know, informal and informative. These numbers are a little bit old. They're about a year and a half old. But going back to that last slide, you can see extreme, extreme uh, low, very low, yeah. So these are the categories. So you can go back to. Advance the slide um, to the next one. This is what that means. So. Um, the state has said that you can't spend more than thirty percent of your income on housing. So that's, you know, in my opinion. That's low. I mean, I know plenty of people who spend more than that. Um, just by the nature of where we live and what it costs and, you know, the, the salaries. But, you know, for an extremely low studio, uh, you can charge four hundred and forty-four dollars as the landlord and be considered extremely low. And you can see it going down the, down the line here. And there's a little bit of a formula again that goes into this, but you know, it's, it's essentially thirty percent of your income. Um, so that. When we're talking about, say, Baumgartner Ranch. And he's doing low income and he's got two, two-bedroom units. He can still charge twelve hundred and fifty bucks and still be considered low income. In that category. You know, and there's always timeframes with these two. So when, when they get the financing, it's usually fifty-five year. Commitment to keeping it at this level. So it's basically forever. Um, and then the table below there is the for sale, again, thirty percent. You know, I know mortgage lenders will let you go higher than thirty percent. I think they'll let you go as high as, as forty even sometimes. But we're dealing with forty percent in the income. And here it just starts at basically moderate. Um, and up, because the, the for sale numbers are so low that there's just really almost no way to afford a home. So eighty percent of AMI is, is the moderate. So, you know, like a, a studio condo would go for a hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
One more item, Kevin.
Yeah.
These are all based on federal counts. So like the federal, uh, I know they say a state level, but the federal evaluates it in different portions of the state. They don't specifically say Sonoma County, Cloverdale. They evaluate Northern California in general and lump us into there. We, we actually don't associate with Marin County. Um, we're, we're more compared to Napa and Mendocino County, but mainly Napa County on these rates. And so we've been fighting for well over a decade with the federal government on. Increasing this rate and that it's completely inaccurate of what we're dealing with in our current state. So, uh, it's unfortunate that the housing, uh. Um, that the housing area is so, you know, they're, they have these restrictions on them that they can't afford, even when it comes to housing assistance. Cause it's based on a federal rate, which is too low for our area.
Yeah, the, the state does break it to county using the federal, um, and that's where this came from. Um, but I agree, it's, but it's just, it just illustrates, it's like, so if we come to you and say, hey, the guy's provider, the, the developer, the, the gal is dividing. Providing, you know, seven affordable units. At sixty percent, two-bedroom, you know, that's, that's gonna be the rent is twelve fifty. And that, of course, does go up. Doesn't typically go down, but as incomes go up, it goes up. Okay, next slide.
Kevin, can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
The twelve, that example you gave. So the people at Baumgartner Ranch, if they. Wanna rent and. What, low, what do you, what is low? What's the other word that goes with that? Low income? Low something?
Uh, well, we, you know, we just typically call it affordable housing, but these are the different categories. So everything from low to left. To low, very low and extremely low is uh, oh, by the way, Cherry Creek is providing our extremely low. I think there's three in there for that previous table. So go ahead with your question, I'm sorry.
But, so does that mean? When they put these apartments up for rent? That's the number they have to use? They have to stick by or? Is that adjusted for inflation? Is there a base year and then it goes up or down or?
Oh, it, it gets amended every year.
Okay, and then the, but the amendment is still based on Mendocino County and maybe Napa County. It doesn't, it doesn't take into effect. Actual local values?
If it does to the best it can, um, these numbers are from Sonoma County, so they do. You know, there could be a big difference between Petaluma or, or Cloverdale, but um. The, the, the closest in geography they get that I've seen is by county.
It doesn't take into account the transportation or the, the uh, the fact that we're not in an urban area like Santa Rosa or Petaluma or Roanoke Park. It includes us with those same cities. So their cost of living is the same as ours in this, in this evaluation. And that's just how it, it trickles down to us, the small entity on the northern of the county.
Which really might be, you know, a bonus to us because.
In some ways it benefits us, especially when we compare to Napa County. When we compare to Mendocino County, it doesn't help us as much. But so there are some benefits. We would just appreciate to be compared to Marin County because our cost of living is more accurately compared to Marin County than it is to Mendocino County.
So I just, I added these tables so you could have a little context. And again, these are adjusted every year based on median salaries and, and other things. So, next slide. So this is kind of what Rafael was talking about. This is where we are right now. So A BAG, we see, so this is how we get those numbers of. What we're supposed to accommodate. Um, it's a big process and I'd be lying if I said I knew everything that went into it. Um, there is some, some politics, I think. Um, last time they kind of came out and said, all right, we're gonna give them cities with, that are in urban areas, the higher numbers. Now they seem to be. Coming back a little bit to say, hey, even rural areas are going to be assigned certain numbers. Um, and I just wanna clarify too. They give us numbers, we strive to make those numbers, and they are adding more teeth into these housing elements. And Rafael can maybe. Talk about some of that. I don't wanna get too deep into the we, the weeds, but. Again, the exercise for us is to say, okay, you've been assigned two hundred units. Um, do you have a way to accommodate those? And I'm gonna, in the next slides, in the next few slides, I'll kind of show you how that works. We go to the next slide. So here's kind of the, one of the first sections that uh, the sites inventory and analysis. And this is where they're changing a lot of the rules. But essentially at a high level is, they've assigned us X number of housing units that we should be able to accommodate in the next uh, eight-year cycle. Where are those gonna go? So we have to identify sites. Um, they need to be zoned correctly. They need to, um, you, you couldn't just say. Oh, there's a real hilly lot. We're gonna put, you know, fifty houses there. There has to be. They're, they're a little wise to that. So you really have to make an effort to show where you're gonna accommodate your assigned housing numbers. And how that fits. And in some cases with this newer cycle, they're going to require rezones or things like. Um, high density that allows uh, multifamily by right. So we wouldn't be saying it needs a use permit. We might have some design control. But they're really trying to strip away some of the uh, you know, the. Places where there could be a discretionary decision in a city. So the, under the sites analysis, this is really what it comes down to is. Where are you gonna put these houses? Show us it works. Show us that, you know, it's zoned correctly and there's not a lot of barriers to those houses going there. And Ralph, I don't know if you wanna add anything to that?
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna jump in and uh, say, um, this is definitely was the biggest takeaway and still is the biggest takeaway that um, from the last um. You know, state meeting that we went to, uh, that a lot of cities uh, are already getting hit with this and trying to renew their housing elements. To me, this is the biggest change and the biggest red, you know, not red flag, but the biggest uh, you know, kind of awakening thing that uh. Like Kevin's saying, this, this site inventory, like this map, you know, for example, you know, there's. What, you know, say there's forty-four sites on here. Um. Uh, we've done this before. Every city has had to do this before and we've used a lot of these, you know, kind of good recycle sites. If it didn't get developed in eight years, in twenty years, you could keep reusing it, reusing it. The state is basically putting a stop to all that with this new cycle. They're saying. And just for example, with these forty-four, I would be surprised by what they're saying right now. I'd be surprised if you can count fifteen of those. So. You know, but the example, the project that we saw before us tonight is, could become the norm, you know, and it might be the city that's gonna be applicant, not property owner. We might be going to the property owner and say, hey. You got a nice open R one site here. Do you mind upzoning it? Can we get a letter from you saying you will? We'll take it to the city, the planning commission, city council to upzone it for you. Because we need to get our housing element certified. Uh, anyway, yeah, so that's the reason why, to me, this is the biggest takeaway and the biggest, you know, wow, how it's gonna, like, you, you kind of always ask, well, how's it gonna, how is it gonna affect me? How's it gonna affect me? This is really gonna affect us because. Sites like, you know, the site that we just saw is. This is really gonna affect us, because sites like, you know, the site that we just saw is, it's, it's probably gonna have to happen. You know, I shouldn't say probably, it will have to happen, because it's already happening, you know, throughout the state right now. Um, one of my good friends at the county who's on the board, basically is our county representative, uh, in the A-Bag. Who's, you know, wrestling with A-Bag for our, for our counties. She has a private, you know, thing that she does on the side, is consulting. And she's working on housing elements for people down, for communities down in LA area. They're going through a heck of a time with this exact thing. So, um, this, this is a big, this is a biggie to me.
Yeah, and it's really gonna depend on what kind of numbers they give us. I mean, if they double, triple the numbers, you know, we'll be scrambling a little bit more to identify where those houses could go. And like, like Rafael said, if we wanna keep using the same one from last time, there's more strings with that and we have to.
Yeah, and, and one more thing on that, um, you know, the highest density that we allow right now in the, uh, um, the H or the, you know, high density, the one that's going for, for sign at the multifamily, the R-three, that's sixteen units per acre. And first, if you wanna count a site, if you're gonna rezone a site to help you with this exercise in our next housing element. The state is only gonna take out a minimum, a density of twenty units per acre. Um, that's how serious they are.
Yeah.
I have a question, Kevin.
Sure.
So my question is on the zoning. Um, can you keep us on top of any zoning proposals are going out there? And, and what I'm, my concern is like the density bonus law. We don't have a choice. We have to do it and accommodate, uh, a developer with some of those density bonus, uh, concessions and incentives. So like when the zoning, cause I know that some cities have changed their single residence over to a multi-use for an R-one to an R-three. Um, so if you get wind of anything going on, can you keep us, you know, abreast of, on, on something like that, just so we're on top of it?
Yeah, and anything like that would, would come to you guys before the city council. Um, just to, to clarify, on the density bonus law, they do have to be providing a certain portion as affordable. And so that would go back to that table.
Thirty percent or more.
You know, and, and I have a question on that. So, um, I, I have that here, it says reduction in site development standards or modification of zoning code requirements or architect design. My question is, is on these incentive and concessions. The developer will come and say, this is what he wants. Um, but say for instance, he wants a reduction of something and we're like, well, that's not gonna work for our city. We still have that right to change that particular concession? Or does he have the choice of telling us, okay, I want a reduction in the setbacks and I want the parking? Does he have that, or can we void our opinion?
I, I think he does. It would probably be a question for legal, but my interpretation is. That they can ask for it and if they're providing, you know, they, it has to be a certain number of affordable units in, there's that table. So if it's thirty percent affordable, they're entitled to one concession and on up. And given that, you know, for example, the Baumgartner was providing so many affordable, he could get all three. Um, and, you know, I think we could negotiate with them. Um, but I, my gut is telling me that they would be entitled to them, but I would probably wanna.
Yeah, yeah, Rafael just told me, yeah, they, they, I'm pretty sure the language, the wording is, you know, the, if, they, like Kevin said, if they meet, you know, this, they're providing this number of units at this, X number, you know, very low. And I think I'm almost positive the wording says, then they shall be granted these concessions, you know? It says shall, I'm almost positive.
Yes, and it does have that. My question is the type of concession or the type of incentive? That's my question. I know that you're entitled, if you, like the Baumgartner, they were entitled to three of them, but do they dictate which three they pick?
Yeah, I think they do, I'm not sure, but I mean, we can, we can research that. I, I hadn't really thought of it that way, I mean, typically.
I'm pretty sure that you do, you know, they could.
They, they know what they need, yeah. So I, um, but we'll, we'll.
But I guess I would say, you know, it's, it's maybe, you know, it's just not a kind of a free for all that, uh, that, one of those, one of those, you know, uh, arguments, I guess, you know, uh, or, I mean, uh, findings, I guess, you, you could say that, that they had, that, uh, that, that they have to make as far as, you know, why they need that is that. They, the project would not be economically feasible if, if, if they couldn't do this. So that's, that is one thing that they kinda do have to prove and, um, that they did show.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just curious, because, you know, we, I, I just wanna know, is that when they, they bring that card to the table, do we even have a choice? So.
Yeah, we're gonna, this is just our initial, we're gonna be having lots of conversations, so we'll, we'll put that one down as a, as a question and, and try to figure it out for you. Okay, uh, next slide, unless there's any more questions? So, um, one of the, uh, the big parts of the housing element, what they call the background report is where all the research is done. And that's where these components fit into is, you know, special needs, do we have special needs populations in Cloverdale? And these are some of the examples, you know, do we have a farm worker housing? Do we have, um, you, you can see what they're, what they're saying here, or over, uh, I forget what they call it, but houses with many people living in them. Um, so, you know, we have to identify that. And the way that we've done it in the past is the census data is a big part of that. Um, it's, we rely heavily on the census data. And so, once, once we identify that we have one of these populations, we, later on, we'll talk about the goals and policies. We have to have goals, we have to have goals and policies that address those particular special needs, uh, populations. Next slide. So constraints, this is kind of a, an interesting one. We have to do an analysis, I mean, is the city putting up barriers to housing? You know, do we have, do we have things like growth control, where we're, you know, metering out building permits? Um, are, are fees out of wa, out of line? Uh, growth controls, so it's basic, you know, and zoning, things like that. Um, we have to identify those and have goals and policies to sort of either mitigate them or have plans to eliminate those. Um, next, I think I have an example on the next slide, if you could. Yeah, so, you know, things like parking requirements, development standards, density, and even sewer and water, um, and growth control ordinances. So, you know, it's on us to identify those. Um, and, and then if we do have them, we have to provide programs that either, again, alleviate them or work towards eliminating those. So that's another big part, go ahead.
Sorry, uh, yeah, this, this is kinda reminding me of, uh, you know, when, when I was talking about the arena numbers and the map, the site, the available sites map, back to that, uh, you can stay on this site, uh, this, this slide, Irene. But, um, this is kinda one of those things that, uh, might affect that, you know? Not to say that in, when, when I said, you know, there's forty-four examples on that site and maybe I'd be surprised if we could only use fifteen of those. Uh, that is drastic and that is, that could probably be true, but that was also to say that, you know, you, you could maybe use some of those sites if, uh, we did some, if they did some changes, you know? If we did some, uh, we lessened the constraints to development on those sites through something, you know, uh, mechanism like Kevin was saying, a, a, a straight ability to, uh, approve the units, you know, through a building permit without designer view or throughout, or without, um, uh, you know, things like, things like that. So, um, there's, there is a map, maybe, there is maybe a way to use some of those other sites if we do things like this. Um, so these, and these are constraints that, you know, we might have, might have to lift on some of those sites if we wanna use them.
Yeah, and, you know, hypothetically, they could say, you know, you, you're requiring three parking spaces for a multifamily unit and that's too high. And they wouldn't necessarily say get rid of it, but give, give developers an avenue to reduce that for, for some, in some way. So that's just, these are some of the examples, but this is, you know, on our, on our, this is one of our obligations to identify these and, and talk about them and, uh, mitigate them in our programs. So, next, next slide. So again, you know, these are, once we've done all of that work, this is kinda where the, the rubber hits the road. And you can look in our current housing element, there's goals, policies and implement, implementation. Um, so really a lot of the goals and policies are gonna come out of what we just talked about in the background report, the constraints, the special needs, the Rena. Um, and so you can go to the next slide. And this is how it kinda looks in our housing element, you know, conserve and improve existing housing stock, that's the goal. The policy housing has to do with, uh, rehabilitation. And then there's an implementation, um, on how we're gonna do that. We're gonna work with the county to try to provide low interest rehabilitation home loans, uh, and, and mobile homes. So there's a bunch of these in the, in the housing element. And this is really what makes up the housing element, which was, again, was all derived from that background report. So, um, these typically have dates and, you know, when they're gonna be implemented and maybe a department even, who's going to take the lead on it. Uh, and this is what Rafael brings to you every spring in our housing report. So they've really elaborated on that, but, you know, originally it was really talk about your goals, what you did, why, did you implement it? If you didn't, why didn't you? Um, and then that gets sent off to the state as well. And that's a requirement, um, to be in good standing for grants is to, to show, one, we have a certified housing element. So we'll send this, and actually it's, it's coming up in the next few slides. But also they look at, did we do our annual housing report? Is that on file with HCD? Cause when I, you know, I, previously I worked in, in Ukiah, they had not done that for a few years and we were trying to get a grant. And that was the comment, well, you didn't do your, it was before I even worked there. They were nice enough to let me go back and do those, but it's, you know, that, that's the biggest hook in all of this stuff is really the grant aspect.
Yeah, there's something to do with the presence at these committee, you know, these advisory committees where they, they delegate the funds. But they don't even look at a community that's not meeting this housing element.
Yeah, I mean, one of the first boxes is, do you have a certified housing? Nope, okay, well, either you're disqualified or you just lost ten points of the scoring on the grant and basically you're not gonna get the grant. So, you know, and we want, we wanna have a good housing element, we want it to be certified and we want it to reflect what the community needs. And we want to use it, we wanna refer to it and we want to, you know, use it to when we're evaluating projects. So, um, I guess, next slide. So the updating process, uh, next year will be starting. I mean, typically cities hire consultants. I know there's a grant out there that we're gonna be trying to get, which the state is actually, you know, providing some of these grants that aren't real super competitive. They're kind of just, you know, you, it's allocated by your population, the money you're gonna get, which we can use towards the housing element. To do it, uh, not many cities do it in-house. I mean, it is a ton of work, um, going through all the steps to those kind of five things I just talked about, all the analysis. So, um, but typically the planning commission's a big part of it. And, you know, these are some of the things that we, we would want a consultant to do focus groups and interviews and workshops and study sessions and all that good stuff. Um, so that will be your opportunity to, to help us with this process. And, you know, I don't have a lot more on the process other than, you know, we're hoping to start, you know, probably mid next year. And we're hoping to have, uh, some kind of grant funding to help pay for it. And I would suspect there's, there's gonna be some changes, um, to our zoning map and our general plan map as a result. And a new housing element, um, next slide. So, yeah, again, once, once we do all that, uh, we send it to HCD for their review. And I've been through this, I, I worked for a consultant who did housing elements and, you know, they, they, they do go through it and they give you a lot of comments. Um, and you, you know, you typically go back and forth until they're happy. Sometimes it would come back to the planning commission and council if there's major changes that, that, uh, really affect the document. But, you know, if you work with them, eventually you get there and, you know, it's, I'm not just saying it's always that difficult, but it can be.
Um, but yeah, and I'll just jump in here too, Kevin, then just, there's, as another example of, uh, how the state is taking this, uh, much more serious, not that they didn't before, but, uh, that they're. I guess to another point that they are, they, they do, they'd looked at it before and they're looking at it even closer now. And just one example of that is, uh, you know, what Kevin was going for, going through before, the very low, the low, the moderate. Um, before, you know, there's the table, you put in the address, the project, the units, and you know, you send it off to them. Now, um, before it, cause this is all, this is all fillable on the computer now, uh, through their website essentially, you know, you put in your password and you can enter the stuff for your city. But for that part of the table specifically, before I can even enter anything in there, I have to give them the address of those, of the place. So they can look it up, uh, and look up the project, I guess, and make sure that it sits, um, you know, in there. They have to essentially allow you access to enter that information into there. So they're, they're very serious about, you know, making sure that these units can be counted as low as you're putting them in there. So, um, they didn't do that before and this is another example of just how close they're looking at this, this next round.
Yeah, so I mean, in summary, you know, they give us the amount of units. We're not to build those units, they're not saying, you know, you need to borrow money and bond against anything or anything like that. But they are saying, here's what we expect you to be able to accommodate. And we wanna make sure that you're not putting barriers in the way, we wanna make sure the zoning is correct. And that you can accommodate that number of units. But again, it's not incumbent on the city to, you know, pay for the construction of those units. It's really just a check to say, okay, the city can accommodate it and there's no real, uh, barriers to that happening. So that's kind of the housing element. Um, there's a pattern to it and there's, there's definitely steps. And, uh, it's, uh, it's all kinda gearing up right now and we just thought we'd get ahead of it a little bit and, uh, give you what we thought would be a decent overview. Um, so I don't know if anyone has any questions?
A recommendation.
Sure.
To, to try to get in touch with the Community Development Commission. They're gonna start their budget season, uh, in December. So if you can get it in advance in this month, if you can get some discussions with them to ask for some financial assistance to increase this study or pay for this study. You might get in their budget schedule before they develop that.
Yeah, no, uh, we're at least, um, sorry, at least, uh, for like, for example, like the site, the site inventory, you know, and, you know. It's a red flag to me and it's, it's a red flag to a lot of cities too, because that's one of the hot topics that a lot of cities are talking about already is, hey, you know, we're all gonna have to do this. Can we, you know, um, can we just hire one person to do this? Also, that's one topic that's already kinda being kicked around. Of course, we're gonna wanna get the numbers first, you know? The reason right now, why, why we are, why, why are we in a holding pattern? It's at, still again, it's at that stage where, uh, the county's, uh, working with, working with A-Bag to get the numbers, uh, narrowed down for each, for everybody. And then once they do come out, well, the first thing is a lot of things a lot of people are gonna be doing is their housing inventory sites, uh, their sites inventory. So that's one example of, there might be a way that we can work collaboratively with the counties, you know, for example, and everybody, all the, all the cities will join in. So that's already kinda being discussed, maybe not Santa Rosa, they might, I think they're doing their own thing, cause they're so big, but, uh, anyway.
Yeah, they never join in, it's everyone else but them.
You're right.
Well, we, we do work with the CDC and the CDC, um, is providing, uh, section eight vouchers to Cherry Creek. Um, which is just a big, big deal for that project when they were able to, to get those, uh, project-based vouchers. And, you know, that's really a financing tool for them that, uh, put that project over the top. And I can talk about that in the planning director's report where that is, so.
Will, will I have to recruise myself?
No, it's approved, we're, we're getting building permits now.
Yeah, good. Any other questions on housing, on housing element? It's my favorite time of year, Kevin knows, I look forward to it every year.
Well, you know, and, and if anyone wants to send us any, uh, feedback on this presentation or others. I know we promised another presentation on sewer and water, um, and we're working on that. We, we're planning to get that to you this week, this time, but we're, we're working with public works director, it's a little more involved. Um, but, uh, we're still, we're still pursuing that.
Thank you. Any other questions on the housing element? Kevin, anything? Okay, we can move on to other business, which we have none, which puts us up to the planners' report and communications.
Okay, um, not a ton of things to report. I mean, I'll just tell you, the Dry Creek Rancheria has submitted for their annexation on the south end of town. We've, uh, sent back a comment letter, missing some information. Um, Vista Oaks, I don't know, Rafael, if you wanna give an update, they're, they're kinda not, they're knocking at the door again a little bit. And maybe, I don't know if all the commissioners were on when that got approved, so maybe you can just give a little description.
Yeah, um, Mike probably knows a lot more with the background than I do, but since I made a shoot, it's, in a nutshell, the project's been around for twenty years essentially, but, uh, it's through various forms. But, um, it's most, you know, recent form than a form that got approved. It's most, you know, recent form than form that got approved with a tentative map, uh. The map got approved, I think in two thousand eighteen, so they are coming up on expiration of that map, um, so they're asking for an extension, so that's where that is. Um, but after that, uh, they. I think in the thirty-three lot subdivision, basically at the end of Vista View, uh, and it would connect basically where across from um hamburger ranch. There's kind of a little. Like a cattle gate or something like that, but currently that might, around there, the road would would connect there with South Florida or North Florida Boulevard. So what they're asking for right now is the extension to the tentative map, um. Aside from that, what they do have approved right now is the preliminary de- development plan for that, um, and the preliminary was more like, you know, the site layout, where the house is gonna be. And what will be next in the precise development plan, uh, which they have applied for, which that and that application isn't complete. Uh, we're waiting for them just to revise that a little bit, uh, it will be the, will be the designer view and that'll come back to the planning commission and then the city council. Um, for approval, uh, but for right now, to keep that whole project alive, you wanna keep the map alive, uh, or they, you know, of course, they wanna keep the map alive. So that's what they're applied for now, though. Uh, we're trying, but we will likely be taking, bringing that to the commission at our next meeting.
Yeah, it's just, just the point is that. It's, there's a lot of upfront costs on that project and I don't know if we were sure they were gonna do it, but they are still interested, so I, I wouldn't. I can't guarantee it's actually gonna go, but they're not giving up yet, um.
Yeah, uh, I guess it's. I think they'll probably put it in their, you know, they put it in their letter, but just financially, they, you know, of course, everything comes down to the financial stuff for the developers and. I guess they were shopping it and just the price points they couldn't meet, but I think the COVID thing really has really ticked some interest up in, you know, people buying houses again. Up uh, you know, out of the Bay Area, I guess, so I think that, I think they named that specifically as one thing that generated some more interest in the project. At least them for financial uh purposes, so.
Um, a couple other things, the uh. We're moving forward, we got that grant to kind of look at the downtown zoning and the T O T, TOD zoning. Uh, we have a consultant with the grant funding and I've sent them the contract, so that's gonna be probably, I'd say, spring. Start talking about that, um, with the planning commission, that's a great opportunity for people who are interested in the long-range planning portion of of planning. Uh, the capital improvement program is wrapping up now and that's really looking forward to, um, you know, big capital projects, sewer, water. Where the planning commission comes in on that is really, we, by law, we have to make a general plan consistency finding. So we, you know, we can dive through the report. And just make sure that, you know, what's being proposed for infrastructure jives with what we're trying to achieve with our general plan and we'll, we'll walk you through that. I mentioned Cherry Creek, they're really close to submitting a building permit, I've been working with Mitch Connor and Paul Fritz, the architects and. They're putting the final stages on that, they need to have a building permit by April first in order to make sure all the funding is. Is in line, so we're gonna work real hard to get that through the plan check process so that nothing happens there. And the wellness center, I've been talking about this, but we do have some progress and we had a meeting and. We think we're going in the right direction, we hope and um, it's coming down to this development agreement. And really hoping to bring that forward as as soon as possible. Uh, I think that's about it. Unless there's any questions.
Um, I just had one on the uh Volpe, the towers building, are are they moving? Forward after they pour the pad, is there more work going on inside now, do we know?
They do have a building permit, um, there was some question about the sewer lateral which got clarified, thank God, that there was some. Concern about it, but it turned out to be nothing, so they are moving forward. They have a building permit and I, it's not the full scope of what was discussed in the beginning, but it's a portion of it. And I can write that down to get more information from the building inspector on that.
Okay.
From the, uh, from off the top of my head, I'm, it's not the restaurant yet, I'm, I'm pretty sure that uh. A handful of the rooms, like, in total, it really isn't a handful anyway, I, I think about half of the rooms they've submitted, but I'm not sure if that building permit is. You know, approved or has been issued, but um, I know that they have, you know, they're, they're, they're moving forward with that part of it, at least half of that.
The accommodations piece, yeah.
Yeah, the, and, yeah, like, I think it was four or six rooms total and I wanna say that they're submitted for like, you know, two or three. So far.
Okay, and just for the commission that wasn't here, when we approved that, we did approve them with a punch date, so when we wanted to see certain things done. So, we didn't wanna see just the restaurant open and forget about the bed and breakfast. You know, we didn't wanna see just a bar and then have an empty building, so we did put some restraints on them on, on the construction.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, so uh. Yeah, um, to tie, to tie the rest more to the rooms.
Yeah, we should look into that and it's, I know they're with COVID and all that, it's gonna be tough to. They are making progress, but we'll, we'll report back with a little bit more info on that one.
Well, as long as they're plodding forward.
They are, they are.
Anything else from the commissioners to staff? Okay, seeing none. I will adjourn this meeting to our next meeting Tuesday, December first, twenty twenty at six thirty PM.
Thank you.
Thank you for your participation tonight.
Thank you, everyone.
Take care.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good, everyone.